The session of the work session of the Hamilton City School Board of Education will come to order. Mr. Frazier, we call the roll.
Mrs. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Kopus?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
And I'll make a note for the minutes that Mrs. Matthews is absent.
Mrs. Matthews is excused. Yes, she contacted me. Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. First on the agenda, I need an approval of the minutes from our last meeting, so I need a motion.
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Kopus. Any discussion? Mr. Frazier?
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Mr. Holbrook?
Yes, we have a board update tonight from the Hamilton High School freshman campus, and here to present that and to lead that is Principal Smallwood. Ty, I'm going to turn it over to you.
It was all a dream. There we go. Good. I told you I would. All right, I'm going to keep to the script here, but thanks to the Hamilton City Schools Board of Education, Mr. Holbrook, and your executive team for allowing us to present this afternoon. We are excited to present to you tonight about the freshman campus, or as we call it, the FC. We've done a little rebranding to make it exciting for the kids. We call it the FC. Joining me today are some amazing students from our FC houses. Shout out to them. Woo woo! Our administrative team and teachers from the FC that came here on their own volition to support these incredible students. So without further ado, FC Hamilton!
In the house!
We practice that a lot. FC Hamilton!
In the house!
All right, so over the last two years, we have presented to the board about some exciting initiatives, mostly centered around academics. You've heard from us, the administrative team, about freshman on track, which means we want all of our students to leave the freshman building with no more than one core semester failure. There's studies that show that those students graduate almost in a one-to-one ratio. So we've talked about that. We've given you the data and things like that, but we wanted you to see our students tonight. We want to also shout out our amazing staff on Teacher Appreciation Week. We really couldn't have done this without our staff. We found out our enrollment was going to increase by 120 students this year, and we completely redesigned the entire building. Every teacher is now on a team, on a house. It is a total rework of our building. You can't do that type of change initiative without a staff that's willing to work with you, so we're going to clap for our teachers. Let's do it. All right, so our theme this year focuses more on ways we're creating a unique environment for our students to find a sense of belonging in a post-COVID world. Everyone is trying to figure that out. How do we get kids to come to school, to be engaged, to be part of a school community after COVID when electronics seem to be the way that things are going? So we knew we had to kind of redesign our entire process. So at the freshman campus, we want every student to be on track for graduation, but we really tried to pivot now to this crew and cause mentality. So we have 800 kids. You think about being a 15-year-old coming into a building, there's 800 students, you may not be able to find a sense of belonging. So we created six schools within a school. They all go to the same classes in that same hallway. Each house is named after a historic Hamiltonian. You see all of their gear and their swag, which they'll talk about tonight. But we knew we needed a champion for this initiative, and I can think of no one better than Hamilton City Schools and Butler Tech Collaboration Project Lead the Way teacher. She is incredibly dynamic. She is now deemed our head of houses. We have a teacher that's leading this, Lindsay Wilkie.
Thank you, Ty. I could not do this at all without the teachers that are in the building either, and this is not a one-man show, and they really support me and all my crazy wild dreams. And speaking of wild dreams, Ty came to me and a couple of other people a couple of years ago and said, listen, I want to do this. And I'm like, wow, it's going to be a big thing, but I think we can try. So our pilot year, two years ago, was, I think, a great success for a start. We had the kids meet for a very shortened bell in the middle of the day, and they were with their houses, and they'd built strong relationships. We had big rewards for houses that won things. We took field trips. They had Kona Ice, you know, things like that. And we had our huge FC Cup at the end of the year, which was really fun to watch. I mean, they really got into it, just trying to earn points here and there, here and there, to win. So it was a great success. They got points for things like academic standing, behavior, attendance, things like that. So after all of that, I realized, can I have that clicker action? Okay, that we need to level it up a little bit. I don't know if you've ever heard of the Ron Clark Academy. It's in Atlanta. Ron Clark's been a teacher for over 30 years, but this man is, I admire him with my whole heart, and it was a great pleasure to get to meet him. But at this school, they have this really leveled-up house system where every kid is rewarded on a constant basis, and they're advocates for themselves. They reinforce really strong positive motivators for people, not just students, but for people in general. Positive motivators like compassion, and significance, and engagement, and truth, and these kids become leaders. And I was like, we need to do this. We need to do this at the freshman school. So I took a lot of like the bells and whistles a little bit, but a lot of the rules and procedures, I was like, we should do that as well. But in terms of the bells and whistles, I think we did that. This is day one. This is our first day, well, our first day altogether, right? We had our split start with A through K and L through Z, and during those days, we definitely set our expectations, like here's our rules and procedures, you know, this is what we expect from you. And then Friday, we just made noise and blew the roof off the school. I mean, it was so fun. The whole morning, they made gear, and they made songs and chants, and they met their house for the first time ever. I mean, except for middle school, maybe. And then they come to the gym Friday afternoon, and it was like they had known each other for years. I mean, it was incredible. They're waving flags in each other's faces, and they're a part of this community that they've been a part of for a few hours. And they were louder than at a football arena. It was amazing. So I knew if we brought that noise all here, we would be a nonstopable force, and we would definitely achieve what we're looking to achieve, so. Thank you.
This is the moment you've all been waiting for. You may stand. Come to the podium. I do have your script here, guys. I'm just letting you know. All right, so we did name each individual house. We had local historian, one of our teachers, Chris Marcello, vet about 30 different names of historic Hamiltonians. Our staff then kind of voted on what six houses kind of spoke to them, each house captain. So we settled on Bailey, Beckett, Hurst, McCloskey, Nuxhall, and Wilkes. We also have our administrators and counselors tied to those houses, so they can get to know the kids a lot better. They know the academic standing of every single kid, which in this last week, we are really pushing to hit that on-track mark. So without further ado, the HHS FC Houses.
My name is Adan, and I want to welcome you to House Bailey. We are the house of success, named after all-star athlete and Hamilton High School graduate Jim Boxcar Bailey. Our animal is the lion, symbolizing leadership, fearlessness, and power.
Be better!
Be Bailey!
Be better!
Be Bailey!
My name is Mackenzie, and I want to welcome you to the house of Beckett. We are the house of leadership, named after William Beckett, the founder of the Beckett Paper Mill. Our animal's a stag, symbolizing dignity, efficiency, and maturity.
One, two, three, Beckett on me! One, two, three!
Beckett!
My name is Lila, and I'd like to welcome you to House Hurst. We are the house of unity, named after Franny Hurst, an American novelist and social activist.
Hurst will be first!
Hurst will be first!
Hurst did win the FC Cup last year. Mr. Robinson, I think, is hoping to bring that home this year as well.
Hello, I'm here to welcome you to House McCloskey. We are the house of perseverance, named after Robert McCloskey. He is a famous author and illustrator. And our animal is the elephant, symbolizing intelligence and self-awareness.
Who are we?
McCloskey!
Who are we?
McCloskey!
Hi, my name is Kennedy, and I want to welcome you to the house of Nuxhall. We're the house of teamwork, named after Joe Nuxhall, Cincinnati Reds pitcher and radio broadcaster. Our animal is the wolf, symbolizing sportsmanship.
This pen is a lot longer, but we're going to go with the shortened version.
I said I know, Xall!
I said I know, Xall!
They're a little disappointed to cut it short.
My name is Yau Mir, and I want to welcome you to House Wilkes. We are the house of generosity, named after Harry Wilkes, a native Humantyrion. Our animal is the horse, symbolizing observance and seeing the best in everyone.
Never back down, never what?
Never give up!
All right, round of applause for our students.
So a big change in this this year was that we really did let the kids lead a lot of it. You know, they helped design their chants, and a lot of their gear that they're wearing and that kind of stuff, they have earned the gear through points. You know, we have our ready, respectful, responsible, and they helped us choose what they wanted to earn with that. Some of it, of course, we pre-did, but a lot of it during that initial thing, Ms. Wilkie met with these kids and helped them develop ideas for what they could earn. And they helped organize the events and the pep rallies and the competitions and all that kind of stuff, that we're really trying to develop student leaders. And so it's not just the staff telling them what to do, and it really increases the buy-in with that. So the goal here with the houses is still to help with the academics. So every one of our kids, rather than in past, we had like a little check-in, they meet with our summit teacher, who is a teacher from their house. Every morning, they do grade checks, they check in on missing assignments, they do things. And it's just helped them be more accountable with their teachers and their classmates and with their house, to be on track for graduation, which for us is just no more than one failing core class, because like we said, that really does project them to be on track and to graduate on time. And they know that. They hear it on the announcements all the time. But we're more than just earning their credits, we want them to earn the skills. So we're still trying to push their map, you know, those reading and math skills, and we're showing that each year, we're growing on freshman on track. Our goal this year is to be over 95% and to keep increasing our math growth goals. You know, we got to 72 last year. We'd like that to be higher this year. But every year, we're just growing a little bit and just trying to keep it moving in the right direction. And the kids have really bought into this, and I will tell you that I have loved to hear the kids competing with each other in the hallways about map scores, which is a very interesting version of trash talk that I did not expect to hear. You know, who made their goals, who didn't, by how much, who got the highest score. They're actually, you know, semi yelling at each other in the hallways sometimes, where I'm like, I appreciate the thing, bring it down a little. But, you know, I'm happy that they're so invested in their growth in, you know, academics and their skills.
All right. So one of the things that we also talked about with the house system is trying to decrease office referrals and major discipline issues in the building. You know, when you have this many 15-year-olds, those things will happen. So we ran the data based off of last year's and this year's thus far, and what we have seen is, you know, this program seems to be working really well. We've seen a large decrease in the amount of office managed and major behaviors in the school. Thus far, we've seen, you know, a 25% reduction in out-of-school suspensions. We've seen a 33% reduction in after-school detention. You know, and the big one that we looked at is a 78% reduction in any kind of fighting or any kind of violence with students. And to us, that tells us that this idea of a crew and a cause is working. You know, the kids feel bought into it, and they're sticking with it. The House effect over here also shows our PBIS. We have definitely improved that since COVID and all the things that are going with it. We just recently completed our bronze level application for PBIS with the state of Ohio, so we should hopefully be here in the back before the start of next school year on that one. So spent a lot of time working with that. The other thing that really helps, I mean, the 90% attendance, this is a pre-COVID level for the first time, that we've gotten back to that level, and we're really proud of that. The kids have been coming in, they work hard. And again, it's all about that belonging to their house and being held accountable by each other and their teachers, so.
I could spend all day talking about this, not necessarily about me in that costume. However, we want kids to think of themselves as the superheroes in their own journey. So I'm going to really shout out Ms. McIntosh, English teacher, department chair, house captain extraordinaire. She said, what if we had students lead parents in their conferences? In the first year, I think Mr. Caldwell did a great spot on TV Hamilton for it. We probably had 150 students. This year, that number more than doubled. We have kids presenting about their futures to their families, and that's their grad plans, that's required by the state of Ohio. Most districts just do a checkbox. We actually had them make a presentation about what their future plans may look like, what types of pathways Hamilton City Schools may offer, and we made it fun. We had food trucks and really tried to get the kids to be there. Mr. Cannell and his team had a job fair going on that night as well, so it was just a really fun experience, getting our kids not only to be invested in the school, academically growing, but thinking about their futures. Because, y'all ready? Every FC student will be on track for graduation with a...
Crew and a cause!
Thank you.
Ty, Ty, thank you so much. It's incredible to see that the traction that's going on at the freshman campus, and to bring all of these kids together from all these different schools into one building, it's a challenge. I know it is a challenge. So I congratulate you all in this clearly by doing what you've done, is have this sense of ownership and the kids really kind of leading what they want to see. And so I compliment you, your teaching staff, these kids. It always amazes me when young people come up and speak in front of us and how well-versed you are and how calm you are. I don't know whether, I would have been able to do that at that age, but compliments to all of you. So you've done a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ty, it's amazing what's going on over there. Seeing the growth on the map shows you're doing something right. The attendance shows something's going right over there. The decrease in fights and referrals, suspensions, it's great. This program that you have, the various houses where the kids have their own group, and, you know, we all know peer pressure helps, and it's helping here. And I commend you and your staff. You guys are doing a tremendous job.
Thank you.
It looks like you have a great set of students over there right now, too, so.
I always say they're not future leaders, they're current leaders. That's the truth.
Ty, I'm very impressed. I think for years, the freshman school has been a, what are we going to do? Because it's a singleton. You don't have students for two years, you have one for one year. You have one year to move them from the middle school concept to the high school. You're blowing the doors off this. And what I see here, this is incredible, the idea that, I love the ideas of fights coming down, because I know discipline has been a concern over there for many years. And bringing people together from all over the city, I know we're going to do 17 Strong next week on me, having the, right, 17, bring your, I've got roller skates for you. But bringing students together from all over the city, and this is the first time they're all together, not just at the middle schools, and doing these things together is, gives hope for our community, too. It's bringing us closer together as a community. The last thing you were talking about, I love that, where the students present their plans to their families, because so often, I don't think, I know that in ninth grade, I had no idea what I was going to do. Or I didn't want to be a teacher, you know, but I didn't know what I wanted to do. And developing those plans and realistic plans, and then sitting down and having to talk, tell your parents, or not having to, but sharing that with your parents, I think that's a great experience for these kids, and it gets them involved with what they're doing and how do they realize those goals for you guys, for your futures. What are your goals for your future? It's one thing to think about it, but it's another thing to sit down and actually express those out loud. So I want to thank you for that, and guys, thank you for coming today. This has been great. Appreciate it.
Mr. Smallwood, I'm very much aware of your passion for education and your dedication to our districts, and I thank you for that. And I want to thank your staff also for creating a great environment at the freshman campus for these young students. And anytime that you, what stood out to me, one of the things was the 90% attendance. Anytime you can create an environment where students want to be there, that's a winning combination, so. And to the students, I commend you, and I hope you enjoyed this year and had a great time. And I promise you, as you move on to the main campus, if you had fun this year, you're going to have more fun next year, the next three years, your high school years, and I know this was the start of it, you're going to love that experience. So I thank you for everything that all of our educators have done, and I'm just proud to be a very small part of it. So thank you very much.
Back in 2002, I had the opportunity to be on the ground floor with the Bill Melinda Gates Foundation. Many of the things that you're doing now are eclectic pieces from that. And I heard someone say they got to visit someplace in Georgia or someplace. Taking small pieces of things from a lot of different places and implementing them into something that then becomes your own and works, it's really powerful. And that's what you, Todd, Megan, your staff have done. And we haven't said or talked a second about pedagogy, what's going on in the classroom and that. We've talked about motivation of kids. We've talked about bringing in a sense of belonging with our students. As President Baker just mentioned, this is the first time all students from Hamilton come together in one building and developing that sense of belonging with the houses. Something, you know, just on paper, it looks simple. Now, when you try to implement it, it isn't quite that simple. But it makes a lot of logical sense to do that. The student-led conferences, you probably learned more on public speaking and speaking with adults during those conferences than you may have learned during that quarter academically, because it's bigger than just the academics. And the academics are extremely important, and I know you're going to do your four-core thing here in a minute, that I almost messed up for you. But I also think that there is other things that can be learned, getting along with one another, you know, working together as a team. Those are going to be lifelong skills that regardless of what job you do, most of those jobs are going to involve working with other people. And how do you get along with other people? And how do you work through differences? And you're not always going to agree on things. And how do you become a small family? Because a lot of times, your work, you see those individuals more than you see your own family in a lot of these jobs. And, you know, so you're learning all of those things through a house system, and you're not even, I don't even know if you know at this point that those are important components. If you don't have that set up, and you don't have the buy-in of your staff, it doesn't happen. Those lessons go lost. And so I want to compliment Ty, Megan, Todd, and the entire freshman campus, because this is a complete buy-in from everybody involved. It takes everyone for it to work. And so thank you for your work on that. I know this has been a two- or three-year project, and I know you continue to tweak it every year, and you'll continue to tweak it, I'm sure, next year. I did hear some feedback that they want a choice in the color scheme next year.
All kids in 2024 want to be on House Bailey, just for the...
And everybody with the same colors, exactly. But I want to thank you for your leadership with that. It is showing a difference. Kids, kids and a sense of belonging is extremely important, especially when you have a school that is basically a nine-month school where everybody changes in nine months. And so you're going to be starting new relationships. All of you are going to go to the high school campus, and you're going to have relationships with one another that's going to be extremely helpful for the next three years. So thank you again.
Great job.
All right. So on the last day of school for the last several years, because our mission is to get them on track, we always jump and hit like a Rudy-like sign on the way out the door. So I did hang a sign up. I think Mike may have torn the first one down, but we're going for it. All right, you guys ready? Make sure you take your pom-poms. All right, four-core out the door. Thank you, guys.
Can everybody hit that?
There we go.
Okay, thank you. That's, as I've said many, many a time, I favorite part of our board meetings is when we hear about what's going on in our different schools, so, thank you.
You can tell with how things are in the high school last couple of years, what they're doing at the freshman building.
Yeah.
Well, it translates.
Yeah. Okay. Next on our agenda, Mr. Holbrook, I believe you're going to go through our commencement.
I am, but before I do that, I want to remind anyone that's watching this is that we do have our commencement ceremony planned for next Tuesday night at 7:30. But what I want to caution, we do have a rain date for Wednesday, and right now, we can't predict the weather, but it looks iffy for Tuesday, and so we're sending out some information through the high school today as well to parents. But I also, anyone that's watching this, understand that we do have a rain date for Wednesday night if the Tuesday night event doesn't work out. Each of you should have a packet that's labeled dignitaries, booklet, and commencement script. And the first thing I want to stress to all board members, we need you in the blue room at 6:30. 6:30 PM, I need all board members in the blue room. You each have a VIP parking pass, and we have put in red the areas that you can park, and that is slightly different from last year. We needed some additional handicap accessible parking, and so we had to move a few things around this year at the high school. And so that is on the backside of the athletic center. If you're facing the front of the Hamilton Athletic Center, it's on the complete backside of that, is where that reserved parking is.
Do you still enter by the fine arts wing?
You enter by the fine arts wing, come right down that road, and if you have your pass, just throw it on your dashboard.
And you said 6 o'clock?
6:30. 6:30. And you can see the setup on stage, and basically what we will do is that it's almost follow the leader walking into the football stadium where, you know, at 7:15 or 7:20, we will start lining up, and we will walk out and take our seats on stage. And then when the diplomas are being presented after the speeches and that, Mrs. Baker and myself will be down at the bottom of the stairs and shake hands along with Mr. Zari and Mr. Funston, and the other four board members will assist in handing out diplomas to graduates. You know, and we kind of have an outline, a more detailed outline in here prior to the ceremony that I went over. All of you will also have an individual cap and gown that we already have ready for you, and that will be in the blue room that night when you arrive.
Dinner, too, right?
We will have dinner as well, yes. And so it's really a fairly simple exercise from our standpoint. There's a lot of logistics to this that may not be pertinent to you individually, but there's a lot of nuances to graduating. We have almost 600 students that will be graduating. We had, we had almost every single student show up at practice, which is uncommon.
Wow, that's really good.
Usually, we have a number of students that are graduating, but for whatever reason, don't participate in ceremonies. That isn't the case this year. John and I were saying, you know, I was over at practice this week, and we both said, almost every kid on the list is here. And so that's exciting. I mean, it's an exciting time for families. It's an exciting time for our kids. I think our seniors are ready. I know our seniors are ready, but it's a big night. And we've gotten a ton of positive feedback over the last three or four years of having this on campus. It helps our community. It helps our families getting to and from the event. It helps our local restaurants and that with business, because a lot of folks go out and eat either prior to or directly after the event. And, you know, the wild card is always, always, always going to be weather. And, you know, in the month of May, it's tricky. It can be 75 degrees, or it can be 47 and rain, and anything in between. And so, you know, at this point, I want to make sure that everyone understands that I need you there at 6:30. And so, you know, at this point, I want to make sure that everyone understands that I need you there at 6:30. And it's in the blue room. And if you have any questions when you're going through this packet, you can call me individually. I'll walk you through them. But the biggest piece on this is that you can see the seating arrangement on stage and understand the assistance in helping distribute diplomas when that time comes. And, you know, if you forget, we'll give you a little nudge to help you out a little bit with that. Any questions about any of that? It was either very well explained or you're sitting there going, I don't know yet what questions I have. Yeah, yeah, I know, Dr. Kope, this is your first time going through the event, so you may have some questions with all of that. But I promise you, it's really fairly simple when you go through it, but it may look more complex on paper.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. Mr. Frazier?
Thank you, President Baker. In your packet as well, you will have two items from me. Summary of TIF and CRA legislation. Attached to that is a draft of the school comp agreement. As well, you'll have slides for the proposed Dorana Hybrid project that I got from the city of Hamilton, as well as the attached calculations on the legal sheet for the deal. So let's go through the deal. So this is a proposed 15 to 18 million dollar manufacturing facility expansion for Dorana Hybrid. It's a manufacturing facility over on the east side of Hamilton on Bell Avenue. They're looking to build a 100,000-square-foot building over there. 65,000 square feet of warehouse and training space. 25,000 square feet of manufacturing space and 10,000 square feet of offices. The ask is a 15-year CRA, 60% abatement. And that will be wrapped in a 30-year, 100% TIF. It is a make-whole agreement, meaning the school district's going to receive the same amount that we would have had the abatement and exemption not been in place. However, there is debt involved with this project. Debt always takes priority one, meaning the school district's going to be priority two. So what does that mean for us? That means this is basically an income tax deal. We're going to get half of the income tax generated off of the property. We're looking at about $2.5 million a year of new payroll taxes or of new payroll income for the city. So what does that mean for us? Right now, we are getting a touch under $7,000 for those properties where the warehouse is proposed to be built. And the deal will have a little over 3/4 of a million dollars in value for us over the life of the TIF. And again, that's an extremely conservative estimate. That is estimating that there is no valuation increase in property value.
Explain that again. I'm sorry. You're saying a 3 million? But I thought that over the 30 years, we're going to get $780,000.
Correct. So I meant to say 3/4 of a million dollars. Yes. 775, $780,000 is what the model predicts. The model predicts no increase in valuation. So as valuation goes up, property tax dollars goes up. And we've got some guide rails in place on the agreement that allow us to grab a piece of that upside.
Jeremy, I'm looking at, after 2042, it looks like the debt will be retired.
That is correct.
So will we receive the make-whole after that?
We will. So there is, there's a piece in this where the city is actually issuing debt. So the city has some grant dollars involved in this, which is why this deal is somewhat timely. And if everybody's agreeable to this, and I've answered everybody's questions accurately throughout the next two weeks, I'd like to place this on the 23rd because the city does have some grant dollars that will fall off the table if this is not completed in a timely fashion.
I see that now over here. The city's waiting to get their debt back until the end of the
Correct. So the city's issuing debt, and then, so obviously, that's first priority in the first 15 years during CRA. After which, they will get their money back that they've put in. And then we get first priority after that. So as valuation increases and payroll increases, you see the $489 there for Hamilton City School District. It's going to be significantly more than that, but this is, again, it's a super conservative estimate. This is, as I present to you always, it's a worst-case scenario.
Am I missing something? Mr. Davidson said debt would retire after 42, 2042, and it looks to me like it's 2044?
It probably, it is 2044. It's a 20-year debt schedule.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I'm just looking at where it says debt, and mine says Oh, my lines aren't
Yeah. Okay. Here, try this.
Sorry, that's as big as I could get on one sheet of paper. But yes, it's 2044. It's a 20-year debt schedule. I had the city prepare a debt schedule so we could work out the negotiation and the deal. But it technically is a make-whole agreement. We are priority two. Debt's priority one. The city's going to be out some money upfront. They're paying themselves back, and then we get made-whole after that.
It's a good project for the community.
Well, it's good for us. They've been hiring our students, they've been mentoring our students.
Yep.
Absolutely. They have got a program. They have a program where they're teaching our kids real job skills. And again, it's not an issue where, it's not a situation where we're losing money. We're gaining money. There's going to be a lot of good jobs there. They're training our kids. Good for us, good for the city, good for the community.
And they've been talking about this for a number of years.
Two years, I think.
Because we did a tour over there, not
We did a tour right when I was hired, so, I mean, it's been a little while.
And the city is rearranging that entire intersection, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
That weird corner of property, so, yeah.
Correct. And there's some grant monies involved, like from the TID, to help with that piece. It's about a, they're going to issue about $4 million worth of debt in order to cover the interchange and all of that kind of infrastructure cost, so.
This is good for it.
I'm fine with this. And I do want to take, this is awesome, what you've put together for us. You know, before you came on, we didn't have this.
Well, you have to
I appreciate it.
You have to understand what you're voting for. I mean, these are, when we talk about these economic development deals, sometimes it's not a lot of money. I mean, this one's under a million dollars. Sometimes they are real dollars. You know, we've passed a couple that are really going to be some significant dollars for the school district in the future. And I just think you got to have all the information that you need to make your decision and cast your vote.
Very good. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Well, quick meeting. Our next meeting is going to be scheduled for Thursday, July, I'm sorry, May 23rd. I guess I must be thinking about vacation again. Thursday, May 23rd, beginning at 4:00 PM, we do have a business meeting scheduled that night as well. So I guess with that, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. The meeting is adjourned.